Okay, um, let's call this meeting I S C three sixty one school board to order. Um, roll call, Mike Holden?
Here.
Michelle Hebner?
Here.
Tony Corpi?
Here.
Jennifer Windows?
Here.
Ted Saxon here, Terry Murray?
Here.
Oh, you know what? That's funny. Um, one sec. I was calling it off at Kevin's screen and it didn't keep on scrolling.
Oh, here, I got it, I got it, sorry.
No, I thought I had mine up. That's on, uh, that's on Terry.
But isn't it down, didn't it move?
Yeah, okay, so Terry Murray, Elabar Jeffries, is she on today?
Nope.
Okay, and Kevin Grover, superintendent, uh, representative, there's, uh, Kevin Grover. Okay, uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, in liberty for justice. I screwed up the last sentence there. Okay, so, um, moving on to approval of the agenda as presented, I'll entertain a motion.
Come up. Second.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by, uh, Roxanne. Um, further discussion, um, Kevin, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm just looking here, of course, I printed a different version, um, just give me one second, I think, um. Yeah, I have a couple, just give me, I'm gonna scroll down through it here, sorry.
Okay.
April is good.
If you click the next button, that arrow double, that'll take you to the next item.
Next button.
The next button, just above meeting agenda there, click that.
I, no, I was just gonna scroll through them here.
Um, well, the only thing that I, I was gonna add that I texted Kevin earlier was, um, about the, uh, update from the strategic planning, uh, committee, or team, whatever they were calling it.
Okay.
But that's what the hell I had to add.
Yeah, the, the only thing I wanted and I meant, um, I should've, if we can adjust, you notice I put in it and I was working with, um, the city on the, they're not doing the Fourth of July fireworks? And so I said, well, cause they're, they're trying to do something, it's technically, I think, on, uh, Labor Day weekend. Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to change that from July, I said I'd put it on there for July or August. If we can just amend the agenda so that, um, it includes up through Labor Day in the event, that way it's taken care of. They're not a hundred percent sure that's the plan right now, so, um, on that action, it's still, I'll set it use of our facility, assuming, um, you know, just like they have in the past, yeah, you have all the coaches on there, um.
Okay. My time even though.
Yep, we got a P E person, which is a good deal. Um, I did just wanna touch base, you'll notice, and I just wanna explain a little bit, uh, with two positions that we've technically hired or contracted through the, uh, learning center in the past. One was for, um, An- Angie Schwartz, um, which has done that for seven years. The other is Annie at the A L C. You notice we're, um, putting them on our, um, back on our books, if you will. And it's for twofold, one, they both wanna be in the local unions locally here compared to the unions down there. Just feel they're more cohesive of a group, they can participate, um, you know, in our activities like Q Comp and so on. Um, the, the other thing is the, um, A L C, or I shouldn't say the Northern Learning Center, the Special Ed Co-op, would prefer if it's gonna be a long-term gig, so to speak, that they be on our, you know, at our group. So, like I say, our special ed, um, demand is growing, Angie's done it for seven years. Um, we're putting her on our books, and the same with Annie, so I just wanted to mention, there's no real difference. We pay the cost no matter what, whether it's through us or through them, but I just wanted to make sure people understood. The only caveat there, there was a M O U with the union because, um, they need to agree that those people, even though they get like years of service, they go to the bottom as far as seniority, and it's just the way it has to be. Um, this one, we got a social studies recommendation there, which we are happy with. That, yeah, and that's, the other, the last things, those projects, those are all part of the long-term facility plan. It's just a matter of their, um, actual numbers, and so, um, recommend.
Okay, alright, I got a motion by Michelle and a second by Roxanne, any further discussion? Alright, here none, we'll call it to a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, one sec again.
Do you want me to go up Ted?
Oh, I just gotta keep it up on my screen and I keep on, cause we gotta roll call everything, so.
Yep.
Okay, um, roll call vote. Mike Holden, yes, Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skoksted Beach?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda is, uh, approved with that, um, minor amendment, um. Okay, moving on to... Bear with me as I'm getting with the new system here. Open forum.
Click the next button, that'll bring you to the next one.
Yeah, I might, I have it up differently, and I think I need to go back into, um, something else here. I had it downloaded, and the downloaded thing looks more like it's, um, the minutes from last time than anything else. Approve. Yeah, it is the minutes, well, what the heck?
Do you want me to, do you see mine Ted?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I keep yours up Kevin, and I'll just go off yours for...
And I'll open the resolution here.
Okay, um...
If you can read it, I don't know how big that is.
Well, wait, 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 I think, uh, I think we need to back up, I think something wrong just happened in this whole process here. Um, the, I thought something weird was happening, so I apologize to everybody. Kevin, you were explaining, um, the consent agenda, and, uh, weren't you approving the agenda, agenda?
Yeah, you went too far.
Hold on, okay, and I, I, I thought, you know, well, he's really not, um, going against the rules, talking about what's on the agenda, so I guess that didn't stop you, but, um...
You're correct, yep.
Okay, so is everybody that just voted okay with having approved the original agenda?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, so then, um, we can move on to the consent agenda, if that's what's next on here.
Open forum.
You're correct.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as present, as presented.
So moved.
Oh, second.
I got a motion by Roxanne and a second by Tony, does anybody need any clarification on the consent agenda, on any consent agenda items?
I have a question.
Yep.
Did we skip open forum, cause nobody's speaking?
Oh, you know what, yeah, no, we split open forum, cause I'm all over the place right now.
Yeah, well, it's my fault, I jumped to it.
Um, so, if, if anybody wants to do open forum, that, uh, you can, um, message at any time, um, and we'll fit you in, I suppose. There's only a couple extra people on this meeting, so, um, and if you have anything, yeah, just put it in the chat or raise your hand or something, and, um, we'll get to you at the end, unless you have something ready right now. Okay, uh, thanks for the clarification, Jen, um. The only thing that, I guess I don't have anything on, on the consent agenda, other than, there's a lot of, uh, hiring for sports, and I just really wanted to say, there's a lot of great names on there, and, um, and I just wanted to thank everybody who, you know, applied for the jobs and who got the jobs too, because it's a big commitment, and there was, uh, there was a lot of people on there, and I knew a lot of the names this time, so I was pretty excited about that. Um, we'll do a roll call vote again, we have a motion by Roxanne and a second by Tony to present the consent agenda. Um, roll call, Mike Holden?
Yes.
See, this is the, this is where the issue is, the roll call's not up again.
Well, see, technically, if we followed Stace undertake action, it would probably bring everyone up. We're gonna have to play with it, maybe some of them.
Yeah, that's right, uh, let me just get the list of people's names, that's really all I need to keep on going.
I'm sad you forgot my name already, though.
I did? No, because, okay, so, when you go through the board chair stuff, what do they tell you?
It tells to rotate names.
No, they tell you to do it in a certain order that's listed in the agenda, because, um, that way, those are switched up every time, so the same person's not voting for, so I'm just trying to be a good board chair, um, but I'm not very confident, um. So I'm just being honest, okay, roll call for consent agenda, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skoksted Beach?
Yes.
It carries unanimously, uh, the consent agenda, moving on.
Can I ask really quick, who motion you been second on that?
That was Roxanne and Tony.
Yep.
Um, okay, moving on to action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations, I'll entertain a motion.
Come up. I'll second.
Okay, when Tony spoke up and said she seconded it, I thought that she's the one who spoke first, so who, who went first?
That, that was me again, so.
It's the one you keep forgetting, Ted.
Why not?
Keep forgetting names.
Did I say somebody else did something for you? This is a comedy era, so let's just keep on going. Hello, all you guys, alright, um, so we...
Maybe we'll go back to the old way.
No, you know what, I'll have, I'll have it sorted out by next time, I promise, uh, this really is a better way. Uh, so, um... Alright, resolution of acceptance of gifts, I have a motion by Michelle, do I have a second? Or, and, oh, Tony, okay. Okay, now, I hate to do this again, but I can't read anything that's on that screen, so I gotta pull it up again, so one second. I'll just have two monitors next time, I own a text order.
How about that?
Let's see, yes, thank you. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, whereas school board policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational program through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute four six five point oh three states that the school board may accept with a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Schools, I S D three sixty one, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Hang on, donations received, just scroll down, F H S scholarship? Oh.
I can't get it, let me just see here. I can't get it to scroll down now.
Alright. Not even with your mouse?
No, not even with the mouse, you, if I read them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, donation, district donations received, F H S scholarship from Rainy Lake Sport Fishing Club, one thousand dollars. Falls Elementary School in memory of Kenneth Buzz Holtman, one hundred. Mister Pete Foundation, one thou- and eight hundred fifty-one dollars seventy-two cents. Alumni Touch Screen Project from Ladna Nita Kacinski at three thousand dollars. I S D three sixty one Community Ed Special Olympics in memory of Randy Mark, a hundred and twenty dollars. Larry Ross Arena Shadow Box Project from Andrew and Kelly Schimon, two hundred dollars. From J S Amadon, two hundred dollars. Baseball Field Scoreboard Sponsorship from Bronco Baseball Boosters, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you Kevin, we've got a motion by Michelle and a second by Tony, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
He fell asleep.
Terry Murray, no, he didn't.
Yes, 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 yes. I kept wondering who that old lady is that's on Leon Ditch's speech, it's like grandma.
Uh, alright, uh, and then, uh, Roxanne Skoksted Beach.
Yeah, so I should all say grandma, yeah, yes.
Wow, okay, um...
Ted, I'm in business now, my screen was covering up the scroll bar, this is the next one.
Alright, um, I'll entertain a motion to, um, accept the resolution, authorize an investment manager for twenty twenty A bond proceeds, and I'll read it once I get a motion.
Make that motion, T Murray. Jen, Jen will second it.
Okay, I got a motion by Terry, did I have a second?
I'll second it.
Jen, Jen was the second.
But Jen will second.
Her mic's muted, did you second it Jen? Okay, thank you, Terry and Jen, thanks for keeping us on track, Terry.
Yep, practicing tomorrow.
Um, okay. Member Terry Murray introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution authorize an investment manager for twenty twenty A bond proceeds, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District three sixty one, the state of Minnesota as follows, that the School Board of International Falls School District three sixty one hereby names Ailer's Investment Partners as the district's investment manager, and T D Ameritrade Institutional as the official depository for the twenty twenty A bond proceed funds belonging to the district. The motion for the adoption of the resolution was duly seconded by member Jen Windows, and upon vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor. Roll call, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Oh, do you know what, I apologize, um, any further discussion, we can't go right to a vote. Does anybody have anything that they would like to ask or add about this at this time? Okay, sorry, let's start over, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes, 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 yes.
Roxanne Skoksted Beach?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. And the motion is adopted.
Okay, Ted, Ted, before we do the High School League resolution now, part of it is we have to watch that why we play video.
Okay.
So, if you don't mind, I'm gonna share my screen here and, um, get that up or stop sharing, um... So, I guess all of you have seen this, um...
Make sure Granny Beach has got her volume up.
I got it up and I got my hearing aids on.
Will you guys top, stop arguing about who's...
Alright, I'm done, I'm done.
Kevin, I don't have volume coming through.
I don't either.
You can't hear that?
No.
No.
Nope, I can't either.
Is it possible you can email it to us and we can send a verification, like, that we watched it back, or... I'm sure, there might be a way to hear sound, I'm not sure.
Look, let me just, give me one more, let me, let me stop the share, cause I tried it before the meeting here, and it worked. So, let me just, let's try it again here.
You could possibly turn your speakers all the way up, but sometimes the noise cancellation makes it kinda sound terrible.
Let's try to get... Can you hear that? No.
I can hear it very lonely.
No.
I remember the sound of her voice, though.
Barely.
Last year.
What do you want?
Why don't we, can we, um, can we...
Uh, Roxanne, hurry up and translate that for us.
Yeah, do some sign language.
If you, if you want to understand, it's not lip reading, it's, it's not sign language, it's lip reading.
But I thank you both.
No.
I will send every, I will send everyone the link, we can put it out on, um, but technically, that's part, so, yeah.
Okay, do you want, um, do we need, uh, ver- to be legit, do we need a verification, or do you just trust us that we'll all watch it?
I will trust you that you all watch it, let me get to the, uh, um, board book here.
Need a motion and a second still.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, I'll get, I'll get the resolution up here.
And do I, do you want me to read out this resolution then?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, for the most part, at least the first, the first sec, then you don't have to read through whole.
So, Kevin, I got better at this, I know we're almost done with this meeting, but, um, I did that following the leader thing and everything, so we don't need to worry about your computer as much and zooming in.
Okay.
We're learning, people, okay, so, approve the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership. I'll entertain a motion and a second, and then I'll read.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Michelle. Resolve that the governing, oh?
Oh, sorry, that was my fault.
I was doing the following.
Yeah, I, I moved forward one.
Okay, let's see, where's it at now?
Sorry.
Stacy, do you need me to bring it up, or?
I got it, it's there.
Is it, it's not up on my thing anymore.
I went back.
Cause it says we all voted yes on it.
Yeah, sorry.
Here, wait, okay, I got it back up, okay. Um, resolve that the governing board of school district number three six one, county of Koochiching, state of Minnesota, delegates the control supervision and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events referred to M N statutes section one two eight C dot oh one to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies that the State Commission of Education as provided by the Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the high school listed below, name all high schools in the district, okay, International Falls High School, is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district, to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League, and participate in the approved inner schools activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league, and all amendments thereto at the same, are, same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook. On file at the office of the school district, or as appears on the league's website, the minimum standards governing participation in said league sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibilities of determining student eligibility and for the supervision of each activities are assigned to official representatives identified by this governing board. Signing the resolution for membership affirms that the governing board has viewed the why we play training video, which we will, uh, which defines the purpose and value of education-based athletic and activity programs and assists school communities in communicating a shared common language. Member schools must develop and publicize administrative procedures to address eligibility suspensions related to code of student conduct violations for students participating in activity programs by member schools. The broad resolution was adopted by the governing board of the school district and is recorded in the official minutes of said school board hereby certified by State Commission of Education as provided by law. Um, so at this point, we will do a roll call vote. Oh, uh, no, we will not, any further discussion? Okay, hearing no further discussion, then we'll do a roll call vote. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxon, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes, yes.
Roxanne Skoksted Beach?
Yes.
Just one time, okay.
Yeah.
Um...
Granny.
Signed, uh, and then we'll sign it, okay, so then it is adopted unanimously. Moving on to receive superintendent year-end evaluation summary in form, and evaluations are due back June thirtieth to, um, Jennifer Horn, and...
And if I can just, if I can just comment, the, the year-end evaluation is attached, but you all should have received, I sent it out in word form today, uh, individual email to each of you. I also, um, put some technically confidential, you know, comments, um, just so everyone's aware. You go through and, um, critique, do your evaluation, put whatever comments you want in, and technically, they are anonymous to Jennifer. Um, in the past, some of you have emailed, obviously email is not anonymous, just whatever you're comfortable. You, um, don't want your name attached to it, so to speak, printed off, or if you want a printed version, we can obviously get you that and then get it to her in a, um, what do you say, mail it or whatever, you know, and don't put a return address. So, if anyone has an issue or have any questions, um, let us know, but it needs to go to her so that, uh, she can put a tally together and, um, or, or summarize it, and then Ted and I will meet prior to July meeting, and we'll all meet and go through the results, um, close session in July. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, um, just give it a lot of thought, I guess, when you're evaluating, Kevin, he does a great job, and he deserves to be evaluated appropriately, so, um, let's see, then, we are moving on to... Uh, we, we're not, um, we, we just, that's it, that's all I had to read, right Kevin?
Yep, that's all for that one, yep.
Yeah, okay, um, action item number five, approve the general fund final revenue and expense budget as follows. Final fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty revenue budget in the amount of thirteen million two hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars, and final expense budget in the amount of thirteen million eight hundred and one thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Budget amounts include the donation fund eleven revenue budget in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand, and expense budget in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand. Adopted fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one revenue budget in the amount of thirteen million seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars, and final expense budget in the amount of fourteen million two hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Budget amounts include donations fund eleven, uh, budgeted in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, and the expense budget in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, this rocks.
I'll second, this is Terry.
You know, I appreciate it, but it's hard to have zoom up and see who's talking sometimes, so... Um, I got a motion by Roxanne and a second by Terry, uh, further discussion?
Okay, and the only comments I would have is keep in mind, we're talking, you know, we're approving, in essence, uh, the end finishing June thirtieth of this year is, is the nineteen twenty budget revenue and expense. There will still be some changes, for instance, you know, we are now just getting into, um, possible CARES Act, which is, I'm gonna call it COVID nineteen funding, there may be some things that we can apply for to have some expenses to date paid for, that would help that. The same going forward, that's not in the budget anywhere, same going forward into fiscal twenty-one, there's gonna be additional expenses along with that additional revenue, based on whatever the school year looks, also, obviously, we have the elementary project in there and a variety of things. We, um, so it's, it's still a, a, a work in motion, if you will, but, um, I'm comfortable with the numbers and where we're at, and projects that are going on, and I'll talk more about that, just hold it.
Alright, thank you, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Alright, hearing no further discussion, we had a motion by Roxanne and a second by Terry, and we will do a roll call, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yeah.
Ted Saxton? Yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad Deitch?
Affirmative.
Ple- please, your vote doesn't count unless you say yes. Oh, I'm just kidding, that's probably not true, okay, um. Great, moving on. To. Let's see. Action item number six. Approve the community education fund oh four revenue and expense budgets as follows. Final fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, sorry, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty revenue budget in the amount of three hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine, three hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars, and the final expense budget in the amount of three hundred seventy-six dollars, three hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. Adopted fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one revenue budget in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand and three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and final expense budget in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry, any further discussion?
The only thing I was gonna comment on is going forward into twenty twenty-one fiscal twenty-one, we have, for the most part, budgeted very similar to last year, not knowing, you know, community ed programming right now, and, and Dan's doing a great job of trying to get some things running under the current conditions, and, um, my stress has been to kinda, in essence, break even if we can, but we're having to do, do things differently, and I'm just gonna use like a camp invention that they're trying to get going for the end of July. I, we need two more teachers compared to normal because of the smaller number of kids that can be with a, an adult. The same goes with like swimming lessons that are starting. Instead of having seven or eight kids, maybe in a group, we're having one instructor with three or four, and each kid having their parents with them, so things are gonna be a little different, but I just want that, you know, people to understand, we're looking at what services can we offer and try and get going, and try and, like I say, break even, but it could affect things, y- you know, for a year or so here, um, so, I was throwing that out there.
All right, any other further discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, Kevin, what's the grant programs that are changed from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one?
Grant?
Yeah.
Grant, where, where are you at here?
What are expenses, it just says grant program?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Um, those were the age-to-age grants that, um, were written from the previous community ed director, and she, uh, was paid out the rest of the wages from it, so they're, they're done now.
Okay.
And the other thing, just to keep in mind, prior to, um, Co- the, the COVID issue coming up, we were on docket again to have a conversation with Northland because they do have funds available again, but it's went on hold until, you know, a further notice. So we may get Doug Skrief was gonna be part of the conversation, obviously Dan, uh, and see what we can get going, so, I mean, we may end up having, you know, an age-to-age again and get some grant from Northland, but at this point, we don't have it.
Okay, thanks.
Does anybody else have any other questions that they would like to ask? All right, hearing none, we'll call it to a roll call vote, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpie?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yeah.
Ted Saxton, yes, Terry Murray?
Affirmative.
Roxanne Skokstad Deitch?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously. Moving on to action item number six, nope, that was action item six, moving on to action item number seven. Approve the food service fund revenue and expense budget as follows. Final fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty revenue budget in the amount of five hundred forty thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars, and final expense budget in the amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred nine dollars. Adopted fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one revenue budget in the amount of five hundred sixty thousand five hundred dollars, and final expense budget in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Roxanne and a second by Terry.
Make a good.
Any further discussion?
Um, I was just gonna comment, if you notice, and again, there is still a little room for change, but the, the, um, twenty revenue and expense came out, um, technically, um, five thousand roughly to the good, which is, you know, i- is great for food service, if you will, to hold its own, so to speak, especially, we've made some changes, I'm gonna say. Um, again, um, this is no way looking back a bad thing, but I think they've made some good changes and um, spiced things up a little bit, if you will, um, going forward into twenty-one, you see, we're, you know, a little bit off. Made the thing, you know, obviously, there were raises a little bit, but we also had someone take health insurance, which is different, but we're gonna roll with it and see if we can't, uh, get kids back and sell some more à la carte items, things like that, um, and, and break even by the end of the year, but.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a roll call vote, Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpie?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yeah.
Ted Saxton, yes, Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Skokstad Deitch?
Yep, Bruce.
Okay, moving on, uh, carries unanimously. To administrative reports, the moment you've all been waiting for, let's start with Melissa Tate Elementary Principal.
Unfortunately, if you've all been waiting, I don't have very much for you guys, um, I don't even have numbers today, I mean, alls I can say is that, uh, we closed out the year the best we could with distance learning, we had a pretty good turnout for, um, our last pickup day, I think we only had like, well, each teacher, for the most part, took the rest of their stuff and delivered, um, on their own, but most teachers, some had none left, and others who had things left only had, you know, two or three items left, so that was a really good turnout for, um, pickup and drop-off, and we got, um, all of our devices back, except for, I think we're waiting back for one device, so that was pretty good too, cause we were a little bit nervous of what would come back, um, and I think we've been working at Falzal, you know, in the construction, and that project seems to be coming along pretty nicely, it sounds like they're ahead of schedule, so that is very good. So that's all I really have, I don't have too much right now.
Okay, thank you very much, um, moving on, I don't see Tim's on here, um.
Yeah, I have a, um, report from him, um.
Okay, Tim Iverson, secondary principal?
Correct, okay, um, Tim's report, as far as enrollment goes, he shows, um, ending the year one person above, uh, the same time and place last year. Um, talking same thing as Missy, uh, we had a very successful school material drop-off the last week of school. The staff worked very hard to get materials sorted and moved to classrooms where they were inventoried and put away for the summer. Uh, he would like to recognize the entire staff for coming together during the period of distance learning. Teachers, parents, cooks, custodians, secretaries, and bus drivers came together to do amazing things for our students and families. Not only did we provide distance learning, but we also provided daily meals and daycare at the elementary. Many people stepped into unfamiliar roles and did fantastic jobs. I greatly appreciate the flexibility and positive attitudes that staff showed when asked to carry out tasks. Uh, as far as the graduation ceremony went well, given the circumstances. Uh, he says, I've had numerous positive emails from parents and students. Thank you to everyone who put in extra effort to make this a success, and to those who attended as guests. And last thing is, we're monitoring guidance from the state pertaining to the reopening of our schools in the fall. We're preparing for a number of scenarios, and we'll have the best possible plans in place when vital, final guidance is given in July, and that's Tim's report.
Thank you very much, Tim, um, Kevin Grover, superintendent?
Okay, um, I, I only have a few things, and, and some, uh, what Tim and Missy both, uh, mentioned, um, I would also thank everyone that was involved with the distance learning, be it the families, students, staff, um, you know, we, we started, we, we improved as we went through, um, not saying it's the plan or what we want, we want students back in the building, but, um, hats up to everyone, um, administrations, staff, and like I say, families for making the best out of the given situation. That said, as Tim talked about, we are working on various plans, um, on the superintendent side, we are meeting on a weekly basis. It's just like this via Zoom, um, with the superintendents in the Arrowhead region, and you know, trying to collaborate, if you will, so that we're not all, you know, creating everything from ground zero. Obviously, the state is giving us some stuff, but there's still, there's differences from, you know, small schools to big schools, and, um, we're working through it right now, and so that's, I think, a positive. Um, like this Thursday, we have a, a safety person coming in that's talking, you know, more cleaning of our facilities, things like that. No matter if we're all back, or in some hybrid, it's a piece we're gonna have to, you know, not that we didn't clean before, but take extra precautions. We have, um, uh, the next week is like a legal person coming that is gonna give some advice on, you know, where we're at with, um, taking, I don't wanna say taking risks, but is we do come back, what do we do if there's a staff member that, um, for some reason can't come back, or families or students that, you know, choose not to, where are we at? So anyway, w- we're working, we're gonna have plans in place, obviously, we want everyone back, but, um, the reality, that might not happen right away, we'll see, so, um, that's that. Um, as far as Missy mentioned, the elementary project on Wednesday, um, there is an update meeting, um, construction meeting, whatever you wanna call it. So, um, we'll all have more, um, info at that point, and we'll try and put a, you know, a little summary out to you, it sounds like they're, um, ahead of schedule to a slight bit, and of course, that can change in a hurry if they run into a mis- you know, I shouldn't say a mistake, an issue, they were delivering some bigger products today over at the arena, so I assume stuff's coming in. Um, for the most part, no major unforeseen, we ran into a little more asbestos, um, on some mastic in the walls, which we're, we're working to come up with a, a fix for, um, I shouldn't say a fix, to take care of and find out what that will exactly cost, but other than that, things are moving along, and, um, again, thank you to the staff, um, Missy and staff over there for being flexible and, um, making the best out of situation that, um, could've started later, let's put it that way, and so it's a good start, hopefully, we can get in a little earlier. The last thing that I have is, and you can look, uh, attached, and we attached it today, there's been, uh, and again, it's part of a process, Missy has asked for some additional, um, coverage over there as far as secretarial time. Um, there've been questions as we've replaced positions over here at different times. So we reached out to a variety of schools similar to us in size, um, and, um, Stacy sent the emails out and collected the information, but asked them, um, we kinda gave our scenario of what positions we have in place, what we call them, you know, from community ed director to dean, um, A D. We didn't put principals on there because we know each building, whether it's here or elsewhere, always has a principal. Um, but then, what we called our secretary positions, what we called our business office positions, and asked for people to give it to us in terms of hours, so what, we can compare, you know, F T E. And so, uh, Stacy compiled that, and, and I shared that with you or put it on there because we've started having a conversation, and I, I just want you to kinda be aware, so if you get, and I know an email was sent today from someone, but if you get conversation, where we're looking at it is, if we're a, and I'm just gonna say a size of school around a thousand students, if we look at our business office, it doesn't matter what we call each position, every school isn't gonna do it exactly the same, but we should be able to compare business office positions, so to speak. You know, someone might do payroll, someone might, might do benefits, or they might, one person might do payroll benefits, someone might Mars, y- you know, vice versa, but we should be able to compare, because if we're close to a thousand students, we should have similar staff. And the same goes with an elementary school, yeah, there might be a difference where one school goes, you know, pre-K through six, and we go pre-K through five, I agree, there are some not a hundred percent apples to apples. But an elementary school compared to another elementary school of similar size, we should be able to compare staffing, so that's what we put together for you, and, um, I think it's worth looking at, because we've had some conversations at the high school here, um, and we, Tim and I met with, um, the secretaries on Friday. We're, I guess, gonna probably recommend to you, unless you have feelings gratefully different, that we don't fill the position we have right now open. We've held off because of obvious, obviously with the COVID nineteen, not having students in the building, it didn't make sense for the last, I'm gonna say, three months to fill that position. But looking at the data that came back, again, I agree, everything is not completely apples to apples. But looking at the schools that responded, and there were three, I think, three on that sheet, or so that didn't, but out of the five we compared to there, it looks like we're, we're, um, higher than the others if we were to fill that position. So I'm just kinda for, um, giving you a little for, I don't wanna say warning, but that's the data, and unless directed differently, we think our job is to, A, I will come with a recommendation in, um, July to probably add a bit of time to the elementary, because it looks like we're, we're not a position short, but it looks like, um, compared to the others, again, um, we're a little low, at the high school, we're gonna work on, um, reconfiguring, and, and I guess what I said on Friday to the secretaries that were at the table was we need to start from scratch, y- you know, we have the opportunity, and we can slice and dice positions however we want, but it looks like the majority of them are right around three support staff, secretaries at the high school level, so we need to figure out, um, you know, be able to operate somewhere in that ballpark, um, I should say, just slightly under three when you do F T E. But, um, so I'm open to discussion, but I think there's, we need to come to the table and figure out ways to do things, possibly slightly different, but yet provide nothing but an A-one service, so.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Kevin, um, wh- which position are you saying, whose position are you saying is that we're not gonna fill?
Okay, so Lori Jorgensen, if you, um, you maybe knew or didn't know, retired, um, I wanna say, middle of March, it was right when the COVID nineteen thing kicked in, we had posted the position, we actually took applicants thinking, we gotta get this filled. Well, when we went into everyone being gone, we kinda stepped back and went, you know, let's wait, if students aren't here, we can definitely get by with, I'm gonna say, the three that we have, meaning the guidance, which is Josie, Jen Erickson, which, um, kind of attendance secretary, and then Vicki, which is kind of the high school secretary or high school. We ran, and they did an excellent job, don't get me wrong. In the meantime, though, as we've looked at, we had a company in working, and we got job descriptions for all the positions, and got some input from them, but then we also went out and, like you say, surveyed schools similar to us in size. And by getting those numbers, I guess, we're looking at it going, you know what, I, I think we should be able to run similar to a school similar to us in size, and that's where we're coming from.
Well, which position is it that, didn't you say that Missy is asking for some extra hours?
Yeah, Mi- Missy has, in, in essence, two positions over there, if you look on the sheet, one is, just give me a second, one is at a point seven five F T E, and one at point five six, so it comes up total of a one point three one F T E. Looking at the other schools, and I'm just reading, um, for you, and you can look at it on your own, but one of the schools had a one point oh, one at a two point four five, the next one had a one point five five, one point four seven, and one point eight four, so the majority are slightly higher, and her request was getting some more time in August. And so, like I said, we'll look at it together, Missy and I, and come up with a recommendation, we're not gonna hire another full-time secretary, that's not what I'm getting at. And the same at the high school, we'll come with a recommendation, as we reconfigure, maybe positions change a little bit, y- you know, and F T E could maybe change good or bad, and we'll deal with what we have to repost positions or not, and I'm actually meeting with the, um, union representative, um, from ASME. And I'm actually meeting with the union representative from Ask Me tomorrow morning to also bring her in. I want her, you know, where we're at and be upfront compared to, you know, behind. So she was included in the email earlier, so.
Okay.
Other questions?
Can you tell me where you're looking? I'm trying to look at the sheet and see what numbers. Trying to understand the sheet better and I'm not sure where you're seeing the elementary, but maybe I'm looking at the wrong sheet.
No, no, what happened, and I'll attach another version. I'm gonna show you here. What I did this afternoon, because I started getting some more questions, Jen, is I took, and I put it in color. It's not the sheet you have. Your sheet had everything, but I.
I'm sorry, now I'm looking at, but maybe Stacy pulled up, it's different. I was looking at a different attachment. All right, I think I understand it. I can see it now more like that.
But, but again, you have to kinda look at it because there's more things in, and I'm just gonna pick up the high school. You know, originally, a guidance counselor, you know, everyone answered what they had for a guidance counselor. You know, what they have. And again, there's some positions where someone's a community ed slash dean, you know, community ed director and dean. Everything is not perfect comparison. And there's somewhere, you know, like us, technically Lori Humbert at the elementary is a very small portion, community ed slash elementary. She does the facility scheduler and lifeguards for the most part, and it does take time. Don't, don't get me wrong. It's not, I don't think, you know, two hours a day, but everything is not apples to apples 100%, but it's fairly comparable, I feel. And yeah, you can argue we don't have job descriptions, but all the work, I'm gonna say, you know, unless someone doesn't have preschool or something like that, all the work at an elementary for, in High Falls, has to be very similar to the elementary in Bagley or in War Road or in Eaton, Baffin, Watkins. I mean, we all do the same reports. We all, you know, we do things differently, don't get me wrong, but that's a piece of it that we have to look at, I think, you know. If we're high or low, we deal with it. And like I say, I don't wanna dictate because I think Missy has to work with her secretaries to figure out who does what. Same with Tim. They have the task of figuring out, you know, what works best together. And we have to be willing to, A, look at things differently, and I think, B, put our heads together and how can we streamline things? And I know we're looking and Jen was one that brought it up, I don't know, maybe a year ago. You know, like with athletics registration, is there a reason we can't get to doing that online? You know, not that it saves all the time, but we're in a day and age that maybe something like that. Even student registration, there's, Casey and Mike are actually working on to where people can register online. Doesn't mean they don't come in, but get the process going, get their names, you know, address, all that stuff put in the system. Either doing it at home or when they come in, they sit down instead of writing it out on a form and someone else putting it in, why not sit at a computer right there and put it all in, answer the questions and it's in the system? So collaboratively, looking at ways to improve efficiency, I guess, is what we're looking at.
May I say something?
Yep, go ahead, Jen.
How does this information compare or the information? You had somebody visit and assess kind of to a work study, right, of the secretarial position? Is there a summary of that information?
What they did is they went through with, again, working with the secretaries. They watched roughly a day with each secretary or each area. They went through and I didn't bring them up with me. They formulated all the job descriptions and put primary tasks, secondary tasks. They really didn't come out with, you know, you're overstaffed one. They did make some comments such as the structure that we had at the high school, the flow did not work, or at least in their mind, doesn't work the best, the way people were arranged. But they, they didn't really come in and say, you know, you're one, I'm just gonna say, one person over and you're somewhat light under. They went through and worked at the tasks and then we surveyed and got the numbers that you got there.
Were there any tasks that you thought, when you assessed that and you found those job descriptions, is there anything you thought, well, these things should need to be digitized or we need, we don't need to do this stuff anymore? Or was there ever a spot where you thought? Because I think, the reason I ask, is there, I guess what I'm saying is there was an assessment of what, I mean, I like the information of what, how we compare to other schools, but we have to ask, how are we doing it and what are we doing? And are, you know, part of the reason that I know I brought up assessing how we're using our secretarial and business staff is like, how are we best serving you and the principals? Are there administrative, is there administrative assistant work that you're doing? That if other, if we better adjusted and organized how our secretaries are working and our administrative support, then you and your principals have more time for staff development, you know, connections with staff, evaluations, growth, vision, you know, new projects, that kind of stuff. So that was one of the things that came up and assessing, I guess, when these discussions came up before about assessing secretarial support. And so I guess my, my question is, I think, I hope that, or I guess, I hope that there's a process where you'll look at what can be digitized, but then what is not getting done that needs to get done, that can better be served at the administrative assistant level.
And I guess, Jen, all I can say at this point is we're in that discussion piece that again, you know, hopefully, the best people will help us, and I'm gonna say, is the secretaries doing the work. And some of the discussion that came up on Friday, and I'm just being frank, is, you know, we've created the positions, I'm gonna say, over 50 years, so to speak. And sometimes, you know, something went with one person because, you know, they had it when they came from, and it didn't necessarily 100% make sense of why one person does this and someone else couldn't do that. And so that was my ask was clear the table, if you will. Let's look at it from, you know, like if we're starting from scratch, don't worry about people. What makes sense together? What is a fair workload for one person? And let's create the three positions and then we'll figure out who's sitting there, you know, so to speak. I mean, realistically, Josie's gonna stay with guidance. That is a gut of a position, you know. But what else would make 100% sense there? And you are correct, if what can we, what makes sense to, you know, work to get digitized, work to get automated. I'm not against, you know, talking with other districts, you know, of what they do, whether they're Skyward or Infinite Campus or whatever, you know, student management system they use, they're all very similar. You know what I'm saying? It's just like online payments, you know, all those schools, including us, take online payments now. Something that didn't happen five years ago, 10 years ago, whatever, you know, they're all doing it. And so that's where we're not a whole lot differently, to my mind, than any other school. There may be some minor differences, you know, an example I used, like we spend some resource, like doing a scholarship, you know, Rotary Scholarship. I don't wanna say banquet, but, you know, activity, maybe we put a little more time into something like that than other schools. All, all schools that I know of, you know, help distribute, distribute information on scholarships, whether they kinda spearheaded it or not, maybe it's something we look at. I'm not saying to get rid of it, but there could be some minor differences. But overall, what we do has to be very similar to another school our size.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep, I don't have anything else.
On that, okay. Appreciate it. Let's move on then to Community Education Advisory Board, or Dan.
Yeah, I can speak, I guess, for this piece. The pool's back and open for business and we've had an appreciative response from your constituents on that fact. So kudos to Kevin for kinda leading the way and then we kinda picked it up and ran with it and it was nice to get it going. We've implemented a policy similar to grocery stores where first thing in the morning, vulnerable swimmers are allowed, the more vulnerable population of swimmers are allowed to have the pool to themselves from 6:30 to 7:00. And then we have some time for everybody else from 7:00 to 8:00. And I've been going in early and making sure everything works right and that, making sure that it doesn't all fall on the burden of the lifeguards. And I, you know, our people have been great and very understanding of what we need to do to keep everybody else safe and keep each other safe.
Are the locker rooms open?
They are. We've tried to encourage the younger, well, we initially tried to encourage everybody, but the more vulnerable population replied back to me. We've been, we've been using the lockers and taking a shower after we swam for the last 10 years. So some population accepted the rules better than others did, so we have opened up locker rooms to them. The custodial staff is, you know, obviously doing more cleansing in there afterwards each day. But many of the young swimmers come dressed and leave dressed, so they, they come in their suit and leave in their suit, which is kinda what I originally was trying to have everybody buy into, but some of the more vulnerable swimmers are some of our more governed population. So.
Did, excuse me, did the, was there MDH or CDC guidelines or anything? I know they were gonna put something out.
Yeah, they did. And that was, part of the problem was kinda, there was some conflicting messaging quite a bit here in, say, late May. So things kinda came officially down in early June. And we implemented and followed all that. So we've got signage posted. And yeah, we're following the MDH guidelines on that. The most recent guidelines are 50% capacity of our pool, which for us, we have a capacity of 278. So we're never gonna even remotely come close to that 50% capacity, even 100 and whatever that would be, 34 or whatever that would be. So, you know, we're more than fine and people are watching out for each other. And this morning, one of the swim, the swim team members came in and him and another lady switched because she said, I know that, I know lane two is your favorite lane. I'll let you swim here. You know, so people are, people are working together. So that's been good to see. And the community's been very appreciative of having the pool and having it back open. It was really the first thing that the school had a group of cars collected back out in the parking lot. Contact me just with, with that excitement. Oh, is that the swimmers? Are they back? So just FYI for all of you guys. And then in July, we're gonna resume swimming lessons. So we're, I just started messaging that out today. We're gonna try to do it, as Kevin said earlier. It is kinda with that, the parents have to be in the pool with the young kids. So again, following the guidelines. And we had a pretty significant hit to our lifeguard staff and especially to those students who are trained to be, you know, to lead the lessons, who are, who are trained to teach the kids how to swim, basically. So little bit of an impact there just based on COVID and many of them got other jobs. I mean, nothing that we did wrong. It just, they, they were waiting and waiting and and had opportunities come up that they had to take. So I'm gonna sit through that. I'm gonna hope, hope for the best. And I've reached out to some of the ones who did it last year that have other jobs and that, you know, I'm hoping to see what we can figure out. But like Kevin said, it may be a situation where maybe we're gonna have to pay a little bit better in order to get those kids to come back, which is gonna impact the budget just a little bit. And it's, it's all based on the situation we find ourselves in more than anything. So. And then same thing with Camp Invention. Kevin mentioned, we are having to probably have four educators instead of our normal two. So those classes will be broken out with nine, nine students, K through six is the age group that can participate. And I sent out an all-group email today to the elementary staff and I had several educators who indicated that they're interested. So, you know, I think it speaks well to our staff that I had to turn away quite a few after just an hour's worth of an email being out there. So they're excited to get back in front of the kids, is what one of them said. And again, I think that speaks to the people that we have here. And then, so I'm working with getting the golf stuff back going. Kevin Erickson and I continue to look at possible options for girls youth hockey camp, but it's gonna be outdoors, so that's kinda a little bit complicating things. Taekwondo is expected to resume. I have a meeting with him on Friday morning. And I think we're gonna do that outdoors with social distancing in place. I'm gonna do a soccer camp in August. Drivers training wrapped up last week. And then for all of you on the call, the School Board Academy is planned for this, for next Thursday, June 25th at 6:00 PM in the library. Currently, we have three individuals who have expressed interest in attending. And I re-messaged that out today, trying to see if we can get more interest. So word of mouth, if you guys know anybody who has thought about running for school board, that's an opportunity for them to learn about what you guys do. And then the Special Olympics, we continue to take some steps forward about that possibly being returned. Really, I guess, the biggest thing right now in some of the conversations that I've had, if you know of any possible coaches or advisors who either took place in that, it sounds like the last time we had it was 2012. So I don't know if that's before all of your times or not, but if you know of anybody who would serve in that role as a coaching advisor, I'd love to start some of those conversations with him or her so that we can kinda keep that ball rolling. And I guess I've been following, and I don't wanna speak for Kevin, but I've kinda been following the lead of the district in that I'm, I'm trying to operate as if life's gonna be normal for us in 2021. And, and, you know, 2020 slash 2021 school year. So I'm moving forward as if we can get this thing up and off the ground by next school year, by next fall. So that would be my hope. You saw on the, on the, that we had a little bit of money come in already for the, for the person who passed away towards, towards helping, helping with the Special Olympics. So. You know, I'm hoping to kinda continue to keep the momentum going. Maybe that's some places for the H to H grant, if that does open back up. But, you know, we're operating right now as if everything's gonna be normal in, in 2021 school year. And if it's not, we'll figure it out, just like we did this year.
Thank you, Dan. And everybody for that school board thing, especially the people getting option, you know, try to pick somebody to, or encourage somebody to go to it, for sure.
Hey, Ted.
Yep.
Speaking to that, just so that we, you know, obviously I've committed, I will be there. You're, I believe you're coming. Any of the other board, the only reason I ask is obviously we can have three board members or we can make it a work session, you know, if, you know, if I wanted to show up and give, you know, I'm just asking, are we set there or how do we do that?
The only thing that I guess, that I would suggest is it'd be nice if either Mike or Michelle, you know, would be interested, just because they've been on so long and have a lot more experience. But it's the 26th at 6:00, so I don't know what works with your schedule. That'd be kinda nice to have a long-term perspective, since a lot of us are so short timers.
I agree. I think you guys have a lot you can explain to people about time commitment and the type of impact.
Well, I, I think I should be able to be there. I mean, unless something odd comes up.
Perfect. And then people can zoom in too. Will be part of the plan. So I'll definitely be there in person. We'll go over the MSBA slideshow, but probably a lot of people will just have regular questions, you know, like, how do you deal with everybody hating you on Facebook for one night, you know, or or stuff like that. Might be more realistic of some of the questions we're gonna get. So. So you think of anybody that you can for that. So who wanted to be there so we can decide if we need to make a work session? Raise your hand if you're interested in going. All right, I don't see anybody's hand, right?
Well, I said I would go.
No, I mean, besides you. I know, I was, you probably. Okay, that, that would be fine too.
If he's ready, I would go, but I'm the short timer, I'm the shortest timer, so I think everybody else would have more input.
Well, you might know the questions that you wish you would've asked during this thing, you know, and help people out with that, what you wish you would've known a year ago, or two, two years ago. Okay, well, I said one other school board member, Jen, if you wanted to, then we wouldn't need a quorum, so we wouldn't have to do anything special. So if you wanna come. Okay, so as of right now, Kevin, no quorum then, so we'll be fine.
And I'm taking requests for snacks. I'm happy to pick up snacks. So if you have any special requests or special dietary needs, let me know.
They gotta be good snacks because we gotta trick these people into joining. I joined the army for two coffee mugs. Moving on to student council report, do we have a student?
No.
You know she'll join us here in the summer?
I can message her, I mean.
Okay, not that she has to, but if she wanted to, she's welcome. Okay, and then we will adjourn at, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:11.
Oh, moved by rocks.
A motion by Rocks.
Seconded by Terry.
Got a motion by Rocks and a second by Terry. If there's no further discussion, then we will do the last roll call for the day. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner?
Yes.
Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Terry Murray?
Yes.
Roxanne Schockstead Beach?
Yes.
We are officially adjourned, although I did just think that we didn't have community, I didn't reopen it back up for public forum, but I imagine that, that's probably fine right now.
And I will shoot everyone the link. Make sure you watch while we play.
You have to. It's the rules.
What about the rec commission piece?
Rocks, get some popcorn.
Oh, yeah, you know what? Thank you, Tony.
Terry, quit copying me.
Oh, hey, we adjourned, but, oh goodness, I forgot the rec commission piece. Can anybody want to give an update on that really quick before, even though we're out of session?
I don't remember, Mike, what we talked about last month.
Oh, I can help you out. City Beach is open and the caretakers are there. We're low on lifeguards, but we're making do. Kind of sad this spring, Little League, no Little League, no sports. For me, it was tough to see that. I never thought I'd see something like that. Served on Little League for 24 years, so I kind of hated not seeing Little League in the ballfields this summer. But 2021, I'm going to hope that it's there and that'll be good.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thanks for catching that, Tony. Okay, now we're adjourned. I appreciate everybody for coming and thank you.